Good evening, everyone.
Is this working?
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you for coming this evening. This is a special meeting to -- we have just one item on the agenda. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk for adequate notice of compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council's special meeting notice dated June 24, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. And could we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston. Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Barton.
President.
President Fox, here.
Okay. And if we could now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the note regarding hearings and comments?
Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 34 and 36 and Verizon Channels 30 and 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTB, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have one resolution on the agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9758. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Summit to reconsider the introduction of an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the Broad Street West redevelopment area and to rescind the resolution referring the proposed amendment to the city's planning board. To say the least, Broad Street West is a very complex issue. If it was easy, it would have been done a long time ago. We have been listening intently and sincerely. We understand there is a call for more changes, clearer communication, and more detail on the financial aspects of the project. This will be done in a transparent way so the community can be confident moving forward. There is wide support for redevelopment on Broad Street West, and it is going to happen. I am supportive of redevelopment in this area of town for a variety of reasons, but I already know it is not going to meet all of my aspirations. That's okay, and I've been willing to find a middle ground that balances everyone's needs. A number of steps remain in the process, and I encourage you to stay engaged in a civil debate. This is a highly charged and emotional issue, but what's clear about the back and forth is that we all want what's best for the future of Summit. What happens now? Meetings will continue over the summer to come up with a revised proposal. Excuse me. The steering committee will regroup, and we will tap the talent of this community. Mayor Radiesh has said many times that this city would not run as well without the dedication of volunteers who donate their time and talent behind the scenes, and I completely agree with that. This project will be no different. Council will continue its other important work, even though it hasn't been getting that much attention lately. There are so many positive things happening in this community. The Rec Department has amazing events planned for the Village Green this summer. I invite you to check their calendar so you don't miss out. The Summit Family Aquatic Center has never looked more beautiful or had more energy, and there's plenty of summer left to enjoy it. Also, check out the new basketball courts at Memorial Park and Tatlock. Judging by the amount of use they're already getting, they are a huge success. This is a good opportunity to point out that recycling collection changes are coming on July 1st. Please check the city website for the most up-to-date information. At the special council meeting last week, this governing body introduced ordinance 22-3262 to amend the redevelopment plan and passed Resolution Number 40354, referring the amendments to the city's planning board, and filing the same with Union County in accordance with the law. The resolution being introduced tonight will rescind both the ordinance amending the redevelopment plan and the resolution referring the ordinance to the planning board. I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Barton.
Thank you, Council President. I am thankful for the thousands of hours of work by everyone involved in the process thus far, including current and past council members, steering committee members, professionals, and members of the community. We're here at our third meeting in as many weeks because we're deeply committed to delivering the best possible product for Summit. I strongly supported the amendments to the redevelopment plan that we introduced last week. I said the reasons why during the meeting. I think they limited the scope of the project, and I would have liked the planning board to confirm their consistency with the master plan. But we've learned there is a possibility that we can get a revised plan, a plan that could address some of the concerns of the community. Therefore, I think it's our responsibility to pursue it. So we will take the summer months to reconvene the steering committee, speak with the redevelopers, professionals, and members of the community. Redevelopment of this area is still absolutely essential to the future of this city. It is our responsibility as stewards of the master plan that clearly prescribes redevelopment. It is our fiduciary responsibility to utilize this opportunity, and it is our responsibility to meet our affordable housing commitments. As we move forward, I will be strongly advocating that this project includes as much affordable housing as possible, maximizes the purchase price and annual income to the city, includes environmentally sustainable features, pedestrian and traffic safety measures, and a robust parking plan. And I believe that it's incredibly important that we continue to do this responsibly and while incorporating community feedback. We do that by communicating clearly, transparently, and regularly about what we are working on, what can be shared publicly, and what is in negotiation and must remain confidential. Providing the background and context surrounding the trade-offs that are inevitable is also very important. Everyone knows this will not be easy, but nothing worthwhile is. This will require balance. This will require compromise. This will require patience. I think this process has been similar to a long road trip. We've planned our route, but sometimes we need to navigate around unexpected detours, perhaps ask for directions, and even stop and rest from time to time for a breather. We've experienced the detours, some rough and stormy weather, and we've also had some arguments with each other. But in the end, we will reach our destination. This is what progress looks like. This is what democracy looks like, and this will be a better community as a result of doing this work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Does anyone else have any comments? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I'm glad to see everybody's here tonight. I'd like to say that I'm thrilled that we are reversing course and setting a new direction for Broad Street West redevelopment tonight. Last week, my vote was clear that I did not support the ordinance to amend our current redevelopment plan, nor did I support the resolution that would send those amendments to the planning board. There's many reasons why I felt that way, but tonight I just -- and I don't want to belabor them. I just wanted to say that part of it was in response to the community and them coming to us and talking about how they wanted to scale the project back, stay within the current plan. And I also believe that the amendments dismissed the hard work of volunteers who worked on the master plan and the redevelopment plan over the years and could potentially open up the door for development across town in a new way. So my vote today is to reconfirm my previous vote and believe that we can build a better project that is consistent with the character of our community. I think this is a great start. And I'm not here to -- I feel like I'm not here to, you know, make anyone feel bad. I just want to reconfirm that I voted the way that I voted. And I think it's important last week that I reconfirmed that I voted the way I did. And I think that it's important that last week it was stated that I was confused on what I was voting on. And so I just wanted to say tonight that I'm not confused. I didn't want to send off the -- I did not want to amend the plan. I was very clear on that. And the reason why I'm saying that is because I want a new start. I work very hard, as much as this board does. I've spent hours speaking to the public and listening to them, just as everyone else has. I've spent a lot of time getting to know the master plan, to getting to know the redevelopment plan, understanding the amendments, understanding what's on the City of Summit website. I've been on this board other than Councilman Miniger. I'm the newest member, so it's like a boot camp for learning redevelopment. And I think that I've been learning as fast as I can. So I'm clear on what it is, and I'm working very hard, and I'm very proud to serve this community and do what I can to make the best decisions and work with my colleagues and work with the community so that we can get to a place that is really good for this community. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. I would like to just point out, though, that one thing that you didn't mention is that you've been on the steering committee since January. So, you know, you've had a front row seat to all of these discussions. So just so there's no confusion, you know, it can't be said that we have left you out of any decision-making process. You were right there. It's only three members of council, and you're one of them. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that.
Can I respond?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, all right. So let me just lay this out for everybody. I've been on the steering committee for -- since January. I've been to three meetings. And so I do feel as though that -- you're right. And there were -- I was sitting at the table. I actually had a speech about that, but I decided I was going to bypass it, but I'll actually cover it. So I've been to three meetings for the steering committee. The last meeting, I was very clear and have been clear with you on how I feel. I've had meetings with you, with Administrator Rogers, with previous Councilwoman Naidoo. And in my last meeting with the steering committee, I was very vocal on how I felt and that I felt we were being dismissive of our community. So I am on the steering committee for three meetings. I was not a part of all the meetings in the past, and I've been working very hard to try and learn and get up to speed. I would say that none of us are redevelopment experts on this dais and that we have a collective brain trust in this community. And so I'm not here tonight to say that, you know, oh, I was the only one that voted no. I'm saying tonight is a reiteration of why I voted no last week. I want to make sure that people, when I hear that I'm confused on my vote, I'm not confused. I have been listening. I've been working hard. I'm not always right. I'm not always right, I will say, because I'm not always right. I'm willing to admit when I'm wrong. But I am not wrong in my vote that I voted last week, and I'm looking forward to doing this, you know, with the community and partnership. It's going to be definitely a compromise, but, you know, so I don't -- I'm not quite sure if that answers your concerns.
Yeah. No. You know, I just want to make clear, I did not ever say -- and nor, I don't think anyone on the dais has said you were confused.
You can watch -- yeah. Okay.
So anyway, with that, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I think it isn't a good time for me also to reiterate my vote from last week's meeting and say how glad I am that we are pausing for reasons a little different. I have been very disheartened by the continued, what I call, second-guessing of every point that has come up and the eroding of the confidence in the experts, the staff, and the council, and the volunteers. And that ongoing aspect has really held us, had us go into what I call a deep hole of misinformation. And whether it is intentional or unintentional, that is what has happened. And so I hear Councilmember Allen's frustration. I need you to know that there are many of us on this board, this council, who are equally frustrated, who are working equally hard, and we appreciate the pushback from the community. We appreciate the clarifying of what are our goals and intentions and how are we going to get there, and when is it appropriate for members of public to be involved. Can't be involved in negotiations. That is something that has to happen. And I am overjoyed with the fact that the steering committee is reconvening and it will be further clarified how they will be engaging council, community, so we can vote as a responsible body. And so I still support the master plan. I support the redevelopment, and I support the very complicated engagement that has to happen in a timely way. And so that's why I wanted to vote no, but I changed to yes because I was very concerned that critical negotiations were going to be halted. And so now we have different information. And I am equally happy that there will be a recommitment from everyone on how to go forward in a way that meets competing goals and outcomes and wants. That's why this is not easy work when people say it's easy. It's very difficult work, and we're all up to the challenge of doing a good job for this city that we love. We know each of you who come here, and whether you complain nicely or you complain in a vigorous way, we want to believe with all our heart that you love this city as much as everyone. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Does anyone else on the dais have any comments? Okay. So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. If you'd like to say anything on this resolution, you're welcome to come up. Do you have any takers? All right. Come on up, Mr. Kane. Please state your name and address. And I'm going to ask --
Thank you, Council President.
I'm going to ask you to stick to three minutes this evening, please.
Thank you, Council President. Just a question. I was doing a little bit of research. As you all know, we're organized as a city form of government. Interestingly, there's only about 14 or 15 other cities in the state of New Jersey. And as the chief executive, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you were aware that you have the ability the ability constitutionally to veto any ordinance. I don't know if you were aware of that.
I do know that.
Okay, so I was thrilled to find that out. I didn't know, because I know we have a weak mayor, and that's a nice power to have.
I don't love being a weak mayor. She's not weak. Believe us.
I will agree, you are not weak. I would absolutely agree with that. So I guess we want to just thank you for doing this. A number of us are going to be interested to see if the Steering Committee is going to have open public meetings, will they be minuteed, how are new members going to be invited to the Steering Committee? And so that's my question. And then I'll just, you know, before your answer, I'll just leave a comment. Anybody can tell me I'm confused, because I have been confused over the last several months as to how we got here. So I guess I'm the first person here who's happy to be called confused. But my question stands about the openness of the Steering Committee.
We need to talk about sort of what the mechanisms will be for how to involve the public, but there will be public involvement. It probably will be something outside of the Steering Committee, because that's a standing committee that already has its functions sort of laid out. It's like any other council committee where there is not a quorum, so it is not minuteed and it is not, it's not open to the public.
But are members going to be selected by the mayor with counsel advice and consent? Just counsel? How are it meant?
It's already constituted, but there will be opportunities, and we need to figure out the mechanism for how to do that as far as how to bring in members of the public to involve them.
Opportunities for new members, as I assumed you meant.
Well, not new members of the Steering Committee, new members of the public to bring them in and get, you know, and get their advice, their opinions, their thoughts. There'll be opportunities for engagement as yet to be determined.
In the next two months.
So the Steering Committee is not being expanded at all by any members, yet you are going to be asking for more input. Will those be public meetings and minuteed meetings?
Mr. Kane, we haven't decided yet.
Okay.
But we will. And the Steering Committee is going to be pretty much as constituted, except for some new members, as to we definitely want input from the community and members of the community. And we will be reaching out to them and making those decisions in the next couple of days.
Thank you. And respectfully, Council President, at Edison Rack, which we old Summit people still call it, Edison Rack, my comments were less than three minutes last time, except for applause interruptions. But thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments? Come on up.
Good evening. David Cook, 160 Blackburn Road. Question, has the council or anyone on behalf of the council or the town had any discussions with the developers since the last meeting?
Yes.
Can you tell us what they were?
It was just a very general discussion about are they still on board to work with us and, you know, trying to think of ways to address what we've heard from the public and what, you know, and what, sort of how to move forward. And it's very, at this point, it was a very preliminary meeting.
So they know what the current plans are?
They know, they know what we're doing today. They've been, they've been watching, they know. And they're, they're still on board with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The representative from L and M was at the meeting, at the council meeting at the community center the other night.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, council mayors. Thank you very much for having this meeting. I'm a little confused. Council President said there are new members, but the mayor said there might be. Did I hear that correctly?
It's not, it's not, the composition of the board is not going to be, of the Steering Committee is not going to be changed in the sense that there are three council members, but it might not be the same three. I think that's, that's what I meant. Yes. It's not, you know, we're not going to be, that's not how we're going to bring in the public for the public engagement part of it. It's a sort of a working group, is what the Steering Committee really is.
So does that, do you know, currently know who the new council members will be and who the old council members that are being removed?
That will be, to be determined.
And just my original comments were based on something that was said earlier this evening. Sometimes when you take a road trip, your course is not correct. Sometimes you have to change course, sometimes you even have to go home. As a father of five kids, I've often said, don't make me turn this car around. Okay? So I'm glad to hear we're changing course. So I appreciate you listening to us. I know it's not easy. I know ultimately something will be on that property, but I think that the crux of our discussions is there's already a plan in place. It was designed by a group a few years ago, however many years ago that was, and there's a zoning there. We need to stay within that. We should not worry about a developer's profit. They take risks, that's why they're in the business. They take the risk. We as Summit should not take the risk and support them and worry about their internal return of investment. I don't care. You shouldn't care. We should get the best bang for our buck there, meeting the zoning requirements, and however you have to do that, you should do that. And I hope this change kind of points that way. So thank you for your time. I appreciate your efforts and enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Hi, Miriam Zahn. I want to say thank you for having this meeting, for reconsidering from last week. I do have, you know, just a, something that's kind of nagging at me going forward. And we have painted a bleak, or council, the city has painted a bleak picture of our debt problem. I read Councilman Vartan's, you know, update today, and it just sort of reminded me that we keep coming back to the debt problem and using Broad Street West, this one building, as a way to sort of remedy a lot of that. And I know it's not the entire remedy, but I'm concerned that too much of the focus is on that being the remedy. I mean, we got a tax cut last year. Maybe we shouldn't have had a tax cut if we have such a debt problem. And I guess that's just my, my question is, can we focus on what is the best building for this location within the master plan as opposed to using this? And if there's any benefit to this building, sort of servicing our debt problem, that's great, but let's not sort of back into having this be our solution.
Okay, thank you. It's a balancing, it really is. There are a lot of competing needs, and debt is just one of them. Having the right building on the site is another one.
And those support things to compromise, right? We do need, we do have a debt problem, but we also need to respond to the concerns of our residents, both who are really worried about their taxes and those who are not as concerned. And we're going to do both. That's why we're pausing, and we're moving forward, and we're keeping everything in mind. So thank you, Miriam.
Okay, are there any other comments? Good evening, Mrs. Hardy.
Vivian Hardy. I'm at 1 Oak Knoll Road in Summit. Thank you very much for reconsidering. What a surprise for all of us that you did that. And it just shows that people can listen and hear. But I hope what I'm hearing tonight means you still are on the path to hear. There are so many people in Summit that are so talented and who are very involved in thinking about this project. And when I hear that the Steering Committee is not going to be open to new people, that worries me because I don't think that you're going to tap on those other people in the community who have talents that you, particularly in the finance area. Twenty years ago, I retired. I was in banking, worked for the FDIC, and I know that the way to analyze financial situation grows as the use of computers and ability to handle large databases grows. And I don't feel like we have tapped into all those ways of thinking about the finances of the city. On another point, Greg Vartan today sent out an email that was excellent and referred to many of the pieces of the original plan that the Planning Board had put together. What I'm hearing is perhaps not going back to that plan. There's kind of an innuendo under here that, that we're not going to make it smaller. We're not going to get rid of the parking issues. The traffic's not going to go away. And that really worries me. When I, we drove through Bergen County over the weekend, and I tell you, we do not want creeping urbanization here. It was incredible. It was at rush hour, and it just was incredible. So please, please, call on the resources of the community as well as your own. Yes, you are smart people, but there are people who know a lot more about analysis, perhaps, than any of us sitting here right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, through you, Council President. My intention with the email this morning was quite the opposite, to say we're still extremely focused on what is prescribed specifically in the master plan, which is redevelop this area. And we're going to continue to push ahead and do that, but I think everyone here has been relatively clear that what we're looking to do is assuage some of the concerns that we've been hearing in the community. And I think, without committing us to anything, I think that probably means a smaller building at a minimum for most people up here. I think it also means, I mean, what I heard Councilman O'Sullivan say, what I heard Council President say, and what I heard the mayor say, was we do intend, in no unclear terms, to tap into the significant resources that exist in this community. And I absolutely agree that we should do that. So I just hope that that clears that up. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from members of the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Sean Feeney, 112 Portland Road. Madam, Council President, you just referenced, as did the mayor and some of the other council members, the Steering Committee. Prior to this meeting, I actually tried to find the list of steering committee members on the website. It doesn't appear there, and yet you say it's a standing committee. Is that a list you could share with us of who the current members of the Steering Committee are?
Sure. Yeah, so it's the mayor. I sit on it. City Administrator Rogers sits on it. Right now, Councilmember Allen sits on it, and Councilmember Little sits on it. We also have two members of the Planning Board, Bill Anderson and Jay Brinkerhoff, who both are very experienced in redevelopment. And then we also have a member of the Environmental Commission, Rick Bell, who is an architect, who's very knowledgeable about municipal architecture and things like that, and has done a great deal of work in New York City and is a great resource for us.
And Summit resident.
As Summit resident, yes.
Great. Well, thanks for sharing that information.
Okay. All right, are there any other comments? Hello, Mr. McGoy.
Captain McGoy. I sent you guys an email volunteering my time. I'm retired. Believe it or not, I'm actually pretty good at this stuff. I can help you. Please let me help you. I don't understand why there would be any resistance, to be honest with you. I think that this is getting way too personal. All I want is what's best for Summit. I don't think people should be arguing up here in the dais about who is responsible for what. Let's just start and get this right. Please, everybody put down their hatchets and just, let's work together. I think that a lot of what's driven and what's bothered us is the size of this, and a lot of that is driven because we have one bidder in the room. I think this is an unattended consequence that we've had to this redevelopment. And because we only have one bidder in the room, you can't get, you can't get price discovery. There's no other bids. So you're relying upon experts to give you advice in what is doable. I think I've presented you guys a lot of stuff to show that maybe that advice that you've gotten isn't the best, and I promise you, I can help fix that. I'm not trying to show up your experts or anything else, it's not my point. My point is literally, we can do this project under the zoning that was set with the original redevelopment plan in a way that is profitable to a builder. I think you have a builder who had sent you a letter at this point agreeing to that, and all my analysis and all my discussions with other cities and towns and what they've been able to do, and nobody's done, nobody that I've contacted in more than one town now has done a RAB or a private development or a 10% pilot program for 30 years. And they can't believe that this is happening in Summit, more than one town. And I don't want anybody getting in trouble for talking to me at any other town. So I won't say names, I won't say what towns anymore. But please, let me help you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGoy.
May I through?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. McGoy, thank you very much for your attention to detail and your time spent with all of us. We have received your email and your offer to assist. We will be in touch. I do not, in any way, shape, or form, discount what you may be able to bring to the table. You just need to give us a couple of days. And, oh, never mind, that's nothing.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay.
Council President, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I just want to say, I hope my message did not get muddled. I actually think it takes an enormous amount of humility to be here tonight. I think that you've done a great job. I think to Councilwoman Hairston's point, everybody's working really hard. We're here for the right reasons. So I want to just thank everybody for all the endless hours for showing up, but I also want to thank you for running the meetings and being here. So I just, I'm here to help, and I hope that my message didn't get muddled.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And, you know, and to the public, we want to work with you. We did, we took this pause because we wanted to have the engagement and to try to come up with something that wouldn't devise us as a community. Because, you know, while this project is very important, so is the health of our community and our ability to continue to all work together for the betterment of Summit. And that's, that's really why we're all here. So, you know, I ask you to give us some patience as we try to find our path forward and figure out what the best process is that makes the most sense, but we will be coming to the community for more engagement.
I just, one more thing. While council will not be voting on anything in July and August, we, I've already set up schedules, and we will be talking to the redevelopers. We will be working on this in July and August, despite our various and sundry holidays, if possible, any of us can have. And we all do, right? Everybody needs a vacation. So we will be, you know, working. Mr. McGoy will be in touch with you. And this is not taking a total pause until September. We will be doing work until we get to September, and then we'll be in touch with the community.
Okay, so with that, we have one.
Yeah, Council President, we have one comment. Dory Gagnon of Bedford Road writes in, "I would like to thank you all for taking this summer to rethink the Broad Street West project. I do have some questions and concerns in regards to this special meeting. Why didn't any members of council second Ms. Allen's motion to postpone this project last week? With the huge public outcry in the last few months, the residents for Summit deserve a reason why," in caps. "I also like to insist that residents for Summit to be a part of the building process for Broad Street West. It is important that residents have a say as to what their downtown looks like. It is apparent that having a vital downtown community is important to each and every here, everyone here in town. Please consider opening up a committee to Summit residents who care for their downtown. I look forward to an open and honest conversation with you all during the following months to get this project done right."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So with that, I, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
No, I recommend a roll call.
A roll call? Okay. All right.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So now we'll move on to public comments on, I guess, any other matter, because I think we've pretty much covered this one. Does anyone have any public comments? Okay, so I'm going to close the comment period, and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming in.
We're good.